Good evening. This is the Planning Board meeting for August 18th, 2021. As Chair, I will open with the roll call because we are meeting remotely. Holden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delisle.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Bob Cow.
Here.
Liam McGovern is absent. Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde is absent. Don Walters. Bonnie Sontag here. We also have Linda Guthrie, our note taker. And from the office, I only see Andy Port, the Director at the moment. I'm going to go through our agenda and then we will start with the first item, which is a joint public hearing with the City Council. And at that point, Counselor Shand will open her meeting. After the joint public hearing, the rest of the Planning Board agenda covers the following items. Minor site plan review for 8688 Prospect Street continued from July 7th. A request for extension at 36 Colby Farm Lane. A request for a lot release at Port Village Lot 22. Approval of minutes from our last meeting and updates from the Chair and the Planning Director. So at this point, let me hand it over to Counselor Shand to open her meeting and then to open the joint public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Sontag. So this is Shand, Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. I'll take role. I will note that Counselor Igraman is absent tonight, so roll call will be brief. Counselor Wallace, are you present?
Present.
All right. So the Planning and Development Committee is present. So Andy, would you like to introduce what the public hearing is about?
Sure, thank you. I would give deference if Counselor Connell shows up, as he is the sponsor for the ordinance. But I'm happy to provide an overview, if that's all right.
I am texting him right now, looking for him.
Oh, no worries whatsoever. I'm happy to provide an overview. So we have a, let me just pull up the map here. Sorry, I have several different PDFs. One that I think may be more helpful is, starting off, is this one right here. This is a GIS map. I apologize that it's oriented with north to the right side. And that's because we could fit more on the page or the screen that way. But this map actually illustrates the old I-95 corridor, what we all refer to as the old I-95 corridor. And what you'll see is there is several sub-parcels. But that land was transferred from the Commonwealth to the city some years ago. The smaller parcels that you see towards the existing or current I-95 roadbed, those are, have restrictions where they have to be kept as open space essentially. So there wouldn't be any development potential there of any kind. But the right-of-way component, obviously, we're all familiar with the bike path that goes through there. And the trail improvements have been done over the years by volunteers and city officials and so forth. There has been discussion about the fact that, and I would defer to Counselor Connell on this, but certainly has been discussion. And with the Energy Advisor Committee and others about increasing the city's net zero capability to generate its own electricity to keep it, you know, on house, so to speak. We try to have renewable energy on municipal facilities. We have a council in order that's before the council right now, talking about energy efficiency and reporting and trying to make sure the new facilities are energy efficient. And it seems to me that, and I'll defer to Counselor Connell, but I do agree with his sponsorship of this because I think it provides potential for renewable energy along a corridor that has very little impact on other areas of the city, you know, particularly residential areas. There is a permitting process before the zoning board of appeals that would apply here, as it does in the business park. There are offsets to residential districts or neighborhoods anyway, even within this corridor here. But it's a rather large area and there is potential, despite the presence of, you know, an array of wetlands in there. There is potential, pending a wetland survey, a definitive wetland survey, to find upland spots and to see where we could get renewable energy from this corridor. And that will be up to the city through an RFP process or partnership with a private entity, of course, you know, on a go-forward basis. But the zoning, I think the intent here was to make sure that the zoning would not preclude that renewable energy corridor from being a possibility. I would also note for the record that the current ordinance that, for the zoning board of appeals that reviews the installation or approval of any turbines, that would happen here as well. If that were to happen down the road, there is a provision specifically speaking to flicker and requiring that applicants address that through their electronic equipment and sensors, such that they can demonstrate that they will not cause issues that I think we, the city had seen in the past due to the Mark Ritchie turbine when that was originally installed. So there is something to address that on a go-forward basis. With that, I guess I would turn it back to you or to Counselor Connell, if I see you here.
I would defer to Counselor Connell since he is the one who is sponsoring this legislation. Counselor Connell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I believe that the summary that Mr. Port provided is accurate. This land is currently subject to a lot of, how should we put it? Illegal partying by kids. Maybe that's the most blunt way to describe it. And not much beyond that, except for, and I point this out and then respect it, the creation of a pedestrian nature trail. The development of this into a clean energy corridor obviously would have to respect the wetlands that are in that area. I see that the Chairman of the Conservation Commission is in attendance and he might want to comment on that. We certainly don't want to invade or disturb any of the wetlands that exist in this area. But it is unused land with the exception of the nature trails. And it seemed to me that this is an ideal parcel for the city to demonstrate its commitment to clean energy and essentially putting our money and our efforts where our mouths are. And that is, we acknowledge, as we did earlier today at the Resiliency Committee, the impacts of global climate change. And this gives us one more opportunity, not a huge one, but I think a meaningful one, to demonstrate the city's commitment to promoting clean energy that does not put carbon into the atmosphere. A group of wind turbines, for example, and I don't know if the description by Andy Port satisfied you in this regard, but one of the first things we did was ask the Mass DOT if they would have any objection to turbines, wind turbines going there. And to the best of my knowledge, their response was, no, no problem. An alternative might be the development of a photovoltaic field in this area. A parcel somewhat similar in terms of total acreage, but not in configuration to that long rabbit road in Salisbury, which has been very successful. And the city could, in a number of different ways, solicit proposals from private developers, enter into a negotiation by which the city could either obtain a credit or a monetary, an energy credit, or a monetary award based on the portion of the profits for the, of the development of, you know, clean energy. So there are a couple of ways it can go. But a precursor to all that would be whether or not this could be rezoned in a way that would permit us to explore those possibilities. Now, one of my fellow city councillors raised the question of spot zoning. And as I understand the definition of spot zoning, this would not necessarily be considered by the courts as a spot zone because the abutting properties are primarily wetlands, some industrial properties, and the interstate highway. I don't think any of those might object to the change in designation here as a spot zone. But I would leave it to the committees, if that is on their minds, on your minds, to seek an opinion from KP Law about the applicability of spot zoning in this particular instance. And I'd be interested to see what they say. As I read the case law in this regard, I don't believe it would fall into the category of a spot zone. But, you know, I'm not an attorney. That's just my layman's reading of the decisions on spot zoning, which a question should have been raised by one of my colleagues. So I think it's probably something we ought to nail down before you proceed too much farther. So I'd be happy to answer questions to the extent I can. I consulted with a number of individuals, especially in the town of Salisbury, where they developed that PV field, to see what the, you know, the problems they experienced there. And frankly, both the town manager and Chairman of the Selectmen said, no, we really didn't have any problems there. The abutters weren't aggrieved and it's been a net plus for the town of Salisbury. My final comment would be this. If we are indeed a green community, and that's how we promote ourselves, what better introduction to Newburyport, to people coming up the interstate corridor, than to have them see a series of wind turbines or a photovoltaic array as they approach the city from the south and are about to cross the Story Avenue area? I like the atmospherics of that, no pun intended. But more than that, I like the possible reality of developing this property in a way that respects the environmental sensitivity of the area and is consistent with the philosophy that we have espoused and promoted over the past two decades.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Connell.
Sure.
Chair Sontag, I think I would like to open it up to public comment right now, if that works for you.
Yes, that would be fine. And then we can have comments from, you know, other members of the council and the planning board with that public comment in our heads. Thank you.
Okay, so as typical for public comment on Zoom, we just need you to raise your electronic hand. And I see Joe Texera and then Stephen Moore. So Joe, I believe you're able to speak.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, as a person.
Your address.
Oh, sorry. Joe Texera, 44 Hale Street.
Thank you.
Like I require everybody else to do in my meetings. I, as someone who's, you know, drives an electric car and has, you know, 6.2 kilowatts on my roof of solar, I'm abundantly aware of the need for expanding the city's green footprint. This area, however, I have a lot of concerns with. I can't come up with any kind of place where we could put in a full array of turbines. There's, most of this roadbed is within 100-foot buffer and a rather large percentage of that is within the 25-foot no disturb because a little river winds its way under the roadbed. So I can envision getting a lot of either solar without obliterating most of the trees near the exit there or any turbines up there. It just, it's not a great, great place that I, I don't think is a great place for it. I think the industrial or the business park is a much better place, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Joe. The next name whose hand is up, I see is Stephen Moore. I believe.
Stephen, you'll need to unmute as well.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, so I concur with a lot of what Joe said.
Mr. Moore, can we get your address, please?
Yes, 10 North Atkinson Street.
Thank you.
The Little River, you know, this area is the headwaters of the Little River. And during heavy rainstorms, it contributes to a lot of the flooding down in the industrial park. If we were to put in either a solar array or wind turbines, there would have to be a whole lot of trees cut. That would increase, I believe, the water flow coming off land and down into the river and down to the industrial park. Also, the trails there, the bike path and the Little River Nature Trail are heavily used by members of the public. It's become a good site for bird watching. Again, if you put one of these arrays in there, you would probably eliminate a lot of that. I'm unaware of kids using it as a party place, but I can see where that might happen. But if you're out there in the daytime, it's mostly people just riding their bikes and walking and observing wildlife and watching the birds. Also, I mean, there's talk that there really aren't any abutters, but the people on Moran Road, which are just to the east of this, I can't help think that they would be subject to the flicker from the blades. And I don't know how you remediate that, but I would think that they would be unhappy with it. Also, I do a lot of hiking up in New Hampshire and I've gone past places where there's lots of wind turbines. And one of the things, they have them fenced off. They have a large area around them so you can't get near them. And there are large warning signs of ice coming off the blades in the wintertime. The blades, you know, they get iced up and when they're turning rapidly, they throw them off. That would not be a good mix for people that are out there snowshoring and cross-country skiing on the old roadbed. So, and I hear Barry's comment that, what a great view that would be coming up I-95 and see a bunch of wind turbines. I'm kind of of the opposite view. Before you get to Hill Street, you're looking out over the common pasture and all those cattle grazing out there. And then you come under the drip bridge and you see a bunch of turbines and solar arrays. I don't know that that's welcome. I want to new report. And again, you know, put these out in the industrial park or somewhere else, I'd be all for it. But I don't think this is a great location for it. Thank you.
Sorry, is there any further comment? And thank you, Mr. Moore. All right. Chair Sontag, and while I see Counselor Connell has his hand up. Counselor Connell?
Yeah, I appreciate what both Joe and Stephen have contributed here. And I don't want anyone to misconstrue my intent. It is not to circumvent the authority of the ConCom to control here the protection of wetlands. It is not. I think that perhaps, though, these, the protection of wetlands and the use of some adjoining property are not incompatible. And the one comment that Mr. Moore made that I have to challenge is this one, about the snow and ice being thrown from the blades. We have an example, although it was cited in a place where we didn't adequately consider the impact of flicker. I clearly acknowledge that that was the case. However, we did a fair amount of research going into that. And we looked at communities such as Hull. We looked at Quincy. We looked at communities to the south that had developed turbines. And that was what guided our consideration when we were looking at the Mark Ritchie site as a candidate for a wind turbine. What is our experience in this climate over the lifetime of that turbine? I can't think of a single instance where ice was being thrown off that turbine at the Mark Ritchie woodworking site. And I would challenge anybody to do so. It's been operating effectively and productively since its installation. So I think that the analogy going up into New Hampshire or perhaps Maine, I don't know where, Steve, I don't know where you'd hiked, doesn't necessarily hold because, again, the climate there is different. It's a higher elevation, the likelihood of ice, and I had been up at the top of Mount Washington before, what looked, in what looked like a a pretty benign day, when it didn't turn out to be so benign up in that altitude. It's a different climate than what we have here. And I think in that respect, that particular fear is something I actually have to challenge. Otherwise, I certainly would look forward to working with the ConCom to look at the possibilities there. And any proposal that came as a result of this rezoning would have to meet the requirements of all of our Conservation Commission restrictions. I mean, that's just, it goes without saying. But I think that if we look at these possibilities, you know, we look at all of these possibilities. Maybe there are others in the industrial zones that are also worthy of additional consideration. I just thought that this was one that is underutilized and had opportunities that people who develop clean energy proposals might be interested in examining.
Thank you, Counselor. Bonnie, do we want to bring it back in and have the internal discussion with the Planning Board?
Yes, I'll call for first just comments from Planning Board members at this point.
Bonnie, this is Don. I'd like to start off by maybe just a couple of comments. First, I believe the commentary on solar photovoltaic is somewhat moot. And the reason I say that right now, for the interpretation of Mass General Law, as well as the Planning and Development Department, solar facilities are permitted anywhere within the city. So therefore, I believe that this ordinance specifically provides the optionality for wind turbines in the corridor. I think others, and I agree with Barry, of course, I think with respect to the environmental issues, whatever, I believe it's binary. In other words, you're so many feet from this and buffer to be, it's black and white. So I think it's a bright light determination there. I also will agree, and I happen to be an engineer that's worked extensively in the renewable energy sector. Not only do you find it very seldom, not impossible depending upon atmospheric conditions, but currently engineering design and safeguards can provide items where they would, under very unusual atmospheric conditions, that you could have the turbine shut down. So I don't think that is an issue. I believe the biggest issue that I'll leave to others to address is in the current zoning ordinance for wind turbines. It talks about the flicker. And I think if you find out from most people, there's a flicker and also a low hunting noise. And at least with respect to the flicker, the ordinance talks about significant. And so significant doesn't mean 1%, doesn't mean 10%, it's subjective. And so I'll end my commentary on that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see that Counselor Connell has his hand up again.
No, I'm sorry. I should have taken it down. I'll remove it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other Planning Board members would like, who would like to speak? Please speak up.
Yes, this is Ann. I think my concerns would be the negative impact potentially on both wildlife, and I'm quite a birder, as well as the enjoyment of the use of the trails. And also, as one of the speakers mentioned, potential flicker on Moran Road. Depending on what was put up there and how closely, that could be an issue. And that certainly has been a terrible issue with the one turbine we now have in our city. So while I know we want to work toward a green community, I just see some serious potential negative impacts for this location and for those reasons.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, yeah, I have a comment similar to that. I guess I have some concerns about it. I see in the ordinance, it talks about having a minimum distance of 300 feet from residential zoning district. And I saw that there was some comment that that was too little and it might be changed to a larger number by some of the other city councillors. So I just, I wonder about that. But even with the 300 feet, that would limit it from the more road area quite a bit. And if it were expanded to 1,500 feet, which was one comment, that would almost exclude the entire area from having wind turbines, it seems to me. So I'm just not sure how many you would even get in there. I do have some concerns about that and how much clearing and the idea of having fenced-off areas surrounding it. And with how much of that would block off of the trail and so forth. I've walked that trail many times myself. I have seen some litter that maybe came from kids partying occasionally. But yeah, otherwise, I've been there during the day. Thanks.
Okay. Next, please.
Bonnie, it's Rick.
Yeah.
So when I initially saw this proposal, I thought it was a really great idea to use the kind of leftover space between the trail and the highway. What I'm hearing tonight makes me understand a little bit more some of the environmental constraints. But even if we can't get a field of wind turbines, it might be possible, say in the Crow Lane area, to even get one. But that, I think this whole, this ordinance brings up a bigger issue, which is that we should be looking for places, not just city-owned property, but other places in the city where we could promote renewable energy, including wind turbines. And as I look at the zoning map and the estimated wetlands overlay and so forth, and just recalling bicycling through fields of wind turbines on farms, it seems like this is a really, really good complementary use for agriculture. So I would like us to think about whether it's possible to be a little bit broader and not just have it for this particular area of the AgCon district, but perhaps some other parts of the city as well. Again, I don't know anything about the farm operation or the, or the plans or anything like that. But just looking at the Myad Farm, for example, this huge area is farmland far away from residences that are out of the wetlands. And if we can do anything to make sure that that land, that agriculture is successful, you know, the traditional way to do it is to put a cell tower there. But maybe a turbine tower is even a better thing. So I would, even if this doesn't go forward, I would like us to think more broadly about how we can incorporate wind energy in some of our other areas of the city, not just the industrial district, which is where it's allowed now.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Bonnie, this is Bob Cow. I guess I have always looked at interstate highway corridors as tremendously disruptive to begin with from an environmental standpoint, from noise, et cetera. And have always thought that those established corridors were ideal locations for renewable energy because, you know, they had already established some separation and isolation from surrounding uses. So at that high level, I would be supportive of studying this further because I think as you look at other opportunities within Newburyport, I think there will be other concerns about proximity to neighborhoods, proximity to other uses. This still feels like a location where adjacent to, you know, an existing interstate highway, there are some interesting possibilities there that we should look at in more detail.
Okay, thank you. Beth, would you, do you have any comments? Oh, you need to unmute, though.
Yeah, my only comment, I guess my question is whether there is, whether the wetlands have been delineated and if there is anything that might show us where the wetlands are on these parcels. I mean, I do think, you know, if I mean, I I do think, you know, if anything were to be permitted, it would go through the Concom and through the ZBA, I guess, the ZBA would deal with the flicker, the Concom would deal with the wetlands issues. So, you know, I think those, while I would be concerned about those issues, they would be looked at and it would be permitted or not allowed accordingly. But Andy, I did just wonder if there was anything that would show, that showed the wetlands.
Yes, could I address that?
Yes, please. Yeah, sure.
So this map here is the best that this office can provide right now, based on available mapping and data, because we have not had a wetland scientist go out there and flag it recently. We're we're basing this on the available data from the state and the city in terms of aerial photography, wetlands, and and, you know, best estimates of where streams and things like that are going through. You know, in a nutshell, yes, there are extensive wetlands in that area. But I think, you know, one thing to keep in mind here is the distance here between the the homes on Moore and Road, it's about 300 feet to about halfway through that quarter there. That's about a 300-foot, you know, distance there. So there is, there is an area down here where, you know, further south, where it is possible for, you know, potentially upland to be located. I would agree with Counselor Connell that, you know, wetlands issues would need to be addressed and, you know, compliance with those regulations would be expected. And I think certainly the placement of any features would be still subject to further city review and permitting. But I think the question here tonight is whether or not we would want our zoning to preclude the renewable or clean energy corridor here from taking place. I I agree with the comments that Rick Tantor had made a moment ago, that, you know, there might be some other areas of the city where this would be beneficial. That might be something for a future amendment, just based on what what we have before us in this this particular amendment. But I I concur that the same rationale might apply otherwise. But but this does seem like an area that, like Counselor Connell says, it's a gateway to the city. It's not very much impact on on other residences or residential districts. Moore and Road is really the only one that that comes in proximity. If you actually look at the 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 map, the zoning map, that's the residential district. So really, it's the upper or northern portion here to the right that would have restrictions on where the turbines could go. But further south, there would be some possibility, and that in fact is industrial. I do think that a fair amount of the open space in the city, it has various reasons why turbines may not be possible there. And that may require some further review. But I do think that if if a contractor is going in here with city permission or, you know, in conjunction with the city to create energy for the city or that we are essentially getting paid for and and using to offset the city's costs, it seems to me that there's also potential there to have that same contractor work as they're pulling out, clean up some of the trail and and improve it from where it is today. We do know that there's been various improvements done on a piece-to-piece basis over time, but that's a good and, you know, potentially mixed results in terms of its impact on on, you know, the site or the area. But this is an opportunity to have a relatively small footprint, I would say, with the turbines. The solar, I I would question the feasibility just based on tree coverage and alignment and width and so forth, as I think Joe Chicero had mentioned earlier. But but I do think that that there's a potential here for, you know, one or two or three turbines potentially. And I I wouldn't want to see the zoning preclude that. It's up to the council and mayor and council, of course, as to what to do for zoning with recommendations from the planning board. I think the question is whether we want our zoning to preclude it, leaving the site details to be addressed through the usual permitting processes and further review, whereupon the city would have to actually issue a request for proposals anyway. Those are my comments.
Well, Beth took my comment. Am I unmuted yet? Beth took my comment and I, about wetlands. I actually feel a bit uncomfortable going forward with a recommendation to adopt this amendment without understanding a little bit better what the topography out there is all about. Normally, I'd say, yeah, leave it to the permitting process. But there are too many questions about where it would be really feasible to use any of this space for wind turbines. And I would like to see some more information about, you know, where the trees are, the blocks of trees, where the rail trail is. I want a good illustration of all of this and the wetlands. You know, if there's, it doesn't have to be any more precise maybe than this, if we know those are the big blocks. But somehow, I would, I would feel a little more comfortable giving this further consideration if I knew more about what it looked like out there. Is that possible, Andy?
Well, again, like I said, this is the best wetlands estimate we can do. So I think it does provide the the best elimination we can for that. We're certainly welcome to add any or happy to add any additional information if that can be located, you know, by others. We haven't had any appropriation of funds for, you know, actual on-the-ground survey of of wetlands. We can see from the aerial photograph, the the old roadbed, you know, slash bike path, if you will. You know, we're happy to add anything to this that might be helpful there, maybe some dimensional, you know, dimensions might be helpful to get an idea of, you know, how much space is there, you know, and so forth. But much beyond that, what we could show at this point.
Well, dimensional information would be helpful, too, because we'd see exactly where the 300 feet take us to off of the property line or the the whole parcel line. And then we could consider some of the alternatives that have been offered around distance. I I'm not ready to make a recommendation on this yet, and it doesn't sound like several other people are either.
And.
All right, I just brought up for your, because folks had asked about the the distance there. The map you're seeing is just showing on our GAS about, it's 308. I was trying to get estimate about 300, but about 300 feet, you know, there you can see going through the quarter off of Moore and Road, the last residential lot, just for comparison. But we can certainly provide some, a map with further labels to get, give you an idea of how this fits in there.
So I see two hands. I see Counselor Connell, who's been up for a while, then Counselor Wallace.
I I would defer to Counselor Wal, well, pick one.
Well, you were first, Barry, so.
The the reason I I popped my hand up was that I want to point out something that I perceive as a flaw in our existing wind turbine, the existing statute that permits wind turbines. And that is that we essentially took a shot glass, put it on the map and said, here's the diameter around which flicker is going to be a problem. And that's misleading because flicker, which is a real issue and something we should consider seriously in its proximity to residential neighborhoods, is primarily in the east and west access, depending on the, and particularly during particular times of the day, when the sun is very low in the sky. North and south, it really doesn't affect. So I I think that that our discussion should acknowledge that and perhaps be broadened, as Mr. Tantor suggested, to look at other sites and maybe the all our existing ordinance to to put a sharper point down it. The the, so so that was the only point that I really wanted to respond to. And and the other thing I would like to say is that I think that Chair Sontag is alluding to the the need to know this property a little bit better. And that might be something we could do and and take a a site walk with members of the Concom and other interested parties so that we understand this property better. Not all of us have walked it and and are are familiar with it. That's all.
I think that's a great idea, counselor. Counselor Wallace.
Thank you, Chair. I I just wanted to put in my two cents here. And and as we talk through, I have more and more questions that are coming into my head. So I agree with Chair Sontag that, you know, we may not have the answers tonight. There's a lot more information that we may want to do and do our research. And I completely agree with a site walk. I think that would be a great idea. And it's it's an interesting policy question because who doesn't want green energy and who doesn't want to protect open space? So, you know, it may come down to that. But the first thing that did come into my mind was just what are going to be the site impacts? Wetlands, clearing of trees, how much of a footprint do these have? Maintenance, access roads, that kind of thing. So, you know, it is zoned AgCon, and that was done probably about two years ago before I was on the council. And and I would think that the AgCon was kind of, there there's a reason that properties were zoned AgCon was to protect open space where needed. Now, we have the highway on one side, but we have, you know, a very large, you know, well-kept, well-used, you know, trail system. And then I also look at, you know, on the other side. And then I also look at the river, and I'm wondering if those are perennial streams. And if so, then we would be dealing with riverfront issues, which is a 200-foot buffer for wetlands. So anyways, I, but I also think Rick Tantor's thoughts of, well, it it brings a question of where where would we want to put, you know, turbines perhaps? So I think it, I think it's a good exercise, but we just have to do a little more, a little more homework. Thank you.
So I will put my two cents in as the Ward Three counselor, who has been to the community that is impacted by the turbines since it's in Ward Three. And I have heard about flicker many times, and I I think we definitely need to make sure that any, if we were to do a wind turbine in this area, we need to make sure that that is not going to impact the neighbors. I wholeheartedly agree on that one. And I agree with Counselor Wallace and Chair Sontag. I think we need some more input on this area. And I I agree, a site map sounds like a very good, I mean, I'm sorry, a site walk sounds like a good idea. So with that being said, Andy, I think we have a few tasks to do before I think anybody wants to move on this one, so.
Sure, I would just ask for a week or two to prepare the revised map or additional map. And then I I guess I would defer to you as to whether or not you want to schedule a site walk or do individuals.
Sure, we can certainly walk, work on that one with the Chair of the Concom and Counselor Wallace, sorry, Counselor Connell and Wallace and the folks on the planning board. We can work on that one outside of this meeting. And I think it was also brought up at the beginning that we wanted to make sure that KP Law put their two cents in on whether they consider the spot zoning or not.
And I will follow up with them on that to answer that question as well. I would also note, I'll defer to you as chairs, Stephen Moore has his hand raised. I suspect that might be to offer to walk the site knowing the wetlands, but I'll defer to you.
Oh, I I have no problem with that. Mr. Moore, you're more than welcome to speak.
Okay, I just wanted to, I I'd be more than happy to go on a site walk with anybody that wants to go. Unfortunately, I'm leaving tomorrow morning and going to be gone for six weeks.
I guess that takes you out of the running, then.
I think it does, but I I'm pretty sure Joe would be more than happy to to go.
Okay.
I just wanted to also comment that those are perennial streams out there for the most part. So that the 200-foot buffer would apply. And also, on the wetlands, the further south one there, which ends in kind of a straight line, that's all wetlands to the south of that. There's a huge beaver swamp out there. And the only other comment I would have, you know, in in looking at alternative sites is that Jerry Myatt, who's the farmer who has all the hayfields along Hale Street, those would probably be an ideal place, and he might be willing to lease a portion of this land to 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 somebody for wind turbines out there.
All right, cool.
T-Bone Pickens down.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Moore. Appreciate it. I see Counselor Wallace's hand is back up. Counselor Wallace?
Yes, one one more question for Counselor Connell. I I don't know if there's an answer to it, but is this an area where the city has been approached by outside developers or or whatnot for wind turbines? Or would the city do some sort of like RFP to attract people in? Or is that too far in the future? Just wondering, like, what, if if this went through, or say somewhere else, what would the process be of actually, you know, getting these constructed and permitted, et cetera?
I'd be happy to answer that if the chair would recognize me.
Certainly, Counselor Connell.
Yeah, the the short answer to that is very short. It's two letters, and the answer is no. We have not been approached by anyone. This is something that emerged during a fever dream I had, I guess. I don't know. It just popped into my head and said, well, why don't we put some of this land or some other parcels, which I think Rick Tantor suggested, and I agree with, to some other use that that we hadn't imagined previously. However, when I ran this past members of the Energy Advisory Board and and Don Walters, I guess I'm going to point the finger to Don because he's so much more knowledgeable in this area than I am. They said, yeah, you know, that that's worth considering. And here's an example I will use. T-Bone Pickens, the famed Texas oil man, is one of the quietest, but most productive developers of wind energy in the world. And what he has done in West Texas, where the wind blows across the land at a at a frenetic pace, and the soil is not very rich, it's only good for cattle grazing primarily, when he hadn't been digging it up for oil. He went out and bought parcels of land, but I'm sorry, take that back, did not buy them, but leased parcels of land that were grazing lands from from cattle ranchers and erected a, an array of wind turbines. And his plan is to put thousands of them up. The advantage being, you know, the the greater the number, the cheaper per unit installation is. He has his own crews setting them up. The 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 rancher benefits from the lease to get some some money in his pocket that he didn't have previously. And the cows don't really care if this thing's spinning overhead. So it it's kind of an interesting model, and it, that's what kind of provoked me to think, well, if T-Bone Pickens can do this, why can't Newburyport? It may not be the best best location, but it's one. Let's let's expand our 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 vision a bit and look and see if there are others or other ways to do it. And and that's what I'm hoping we can come out of this exercise with. And and that is, you know, looking at at the the footprint of the city in ways that we haven't looked at it previously.
Thank you, counselor. I don't think I ever expected T-Bone Pickens to be used as a reference in a planning board meeting. Um, I'm sorry. So.
One purchaser of Vets' Winter Bones.
Good to know. All right. With that being said, Andy, I think you have your work cut out for you. And Chair Sontag, I don't want to put words into your mouth, but I guess we could probably vote to keep this in committee for a while?
Well, we actually, if we're going to continue it, we have to continue it to a date certain.
Okay. Do we have one? Did you want to pick?
I don't know. I know we have another joint public hearing for the second meeting in September.
That's right.
So we can't put it out there. The first meeting in in September would be too soon.
Right.
So I don't know what the date is, but maybe the next meeting in, the first meeting in October.
The 16th or 13th.
Yeah, we'll do either one. It doesn't, I I think we certainly have enough time by the first meeting in October, if it's October 6.
Is it the first Wednesday or the second Wednesday in October?
Oh, it should be the first, sorry.
So it would be October the 6th?
Yep.
I mean, chairs, could I just interject? I think you had mentioned, Chair Sontag, that the September 15th, we plan on having an amendment that's reviewed. I just wanted to ask, is there any rationale for having, since your meeting that night already, doing it together? Or I wasn't sure if I understood.
Well, I assumed we didn't want to have two on the same night. But if you manage, no, just hear me out. If you manage the planning board agenda so that there are just very minor applications or continuances to deal with that night, we could certainly handle two.
I'm fine with that. What is the other topic we have on the 15th?
That is the parking amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I believe that's a relatively straightforward one, I, you know.
Yeah, I would be happy doing it with, doing it on the 15th as well, Bonnie. If Andy, you can get all of the data, and I think probably by then, we could probably have a site walk.
Sure, I think that's doable.
Okay. All right.
This will not affect the meeting, but just to be open with everything, I will not be there that night. Rick will be chairing the meeting, and I'm sure it'll go just fine.
If I could also just interject for the record, for continuances, the planning board is migrating to a a hybrid-type meeting where we are both in person and remote. So the plan is to have that access for the meetings going forward in September. We're working out the the details still, but we would expect the physical location to be at the senior center for this continuance and the remote location to be the, you know, same zoom link. and the remote location to be, you know, same Zoom link on the city's website. But look to the city calendar for confirmation of details.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
All right, so I'll take, um, yeah, is it okay for me to do it first? Doesn't much matter. Okay, I'll take a motion to continue this joint public hearing to October 6.
No, September 15.
Oh, September 15th. I just wrote down the wrong, thank you. That's why I have all of you there to catch me. Thank you. September 15th, may I have a motion?
So moved, Don.
Thank you, Don. Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Alden, thank you. I'll call roll of those who are present. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you.
All right, Council Wallace, would you like to follow suit?
Sure. A motion to continue the hearing to September 15th.
All right, all those in favor, Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Shand, yes. All right. Council Wallace, would you like to take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Shand, yes. All right, uh, thank you all. We will let you continue your meeting. Have a good one.
Thank you for their comments and for their willingness to consider this proposal.
Thank you, Council Connell. Appreciate your time.
All right, we'll continue on with the Planning Board meeting and our agenda. First item is the Minor Site Plan Review for 8688 Prospect Street, which was continued from July 7. And I believe there's been a visit to the ZBA and some other updated information. So are we going to hear from, which, which one of the representatives of the applicant would like to speak first?
Madam Chair, Attorney Douglas DeShane.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, representing 8688 Prospect Street LLC. Blake Wilcox, manager. Mr. Wilcox is on the call with us this evening, as well as Stephen Sawyer from Design Consultants, Inc., and Matt Langus from Scott M. Brown Architects. So we have our development team here to answer any questions. If I could, well, that first slide, I just wanted to give you a quick review, an overview of where we are. This, the yellow area depicts the property at 8688 Prospect Street. You can see it is at the corner of Prospect Street and Parsons Street. Go to the next slide, please. You'll recall that our original project summary was to do renovations in addition to the existing five-unit building. We had proposed a new three-car garage off of Parsons Street. We were creating permeable parking areas. The proposed additions in garage did not add any new conformities. And as you know, it triggered minor site plan review as well as a special permit review with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Just quickly, if we go to the next two or three slides, I just wanted to remind the board, this is the property. These are a view from Prospect Street and the corner of Prospect and Parsons. We could go to, there we go. This is moving down along Parsons, as you'll recall. And then the last slide shows the far end of the property where the proposed garage is to be located. And next slide, please. You'll recall that at the meeting of July 7, the board did conclude that our application was complete. The board voted to grant the requested waivers we had requested at that time. The board did propose some special conditions for us to consider. One is that the, that we would install the replacement street trees per the Tree Commission Chair prior to occupancy. There would be a requirement of an as-built plan provided before occupancy. And then last, we were requested to do revisions to the Prospect Street landscaping. And then, of course, the board did continue the hearing pending completion of our ZBA special permit process. There were some changes agreed to or requested during the Zoning Board of Appeals. Those changes are reflected in changes to our architectural plans. First, on Plan A2-1, there was a single existing exterior door that was originally proposed to be removed entirely. That has been added back into the, to the proposal, and the door itself will be replaced in its existing location and size. Also, there was a proposed sliding glass door to be added to the building. That has now been removed, and double-hung windows are proposed to be located in that slider location. Those two changes are also reflected in Plans EC6 and EC7, and I'll show you those in just a sec. The, these changes ultimately resulted in us being able to reduce our proposed wall removal, which, as you know, is, is reviewed under the DCOD regulations. We have decreased, we're still below the 25% threshold. However, we've gone from 24.97% to 24.26%, thereby providing a greater cushion from the 25% limit. So those were changes agreed to with the zoning board. Thank you. Next slide. As you can see, where this green arrow is, that is the location of where we were proposing to eliminate a, a single exterior door. And if you can hop to the next slide, please, you can see that that door has been added back in. So that was that first change I mentioned. The next slide, you can see where that arrow is. That is the location where it was originally proposed to put a sliding glass door. And then the next slide shows that we have now agreed to replace that or to replace that door with two double-hung windows. So those are the changes to the building that resulted in a reduction of wall impacts. There was, next slide, please, thank you. There were also proposed changes to the garage, which are reflected in the revised garage elevations. The garage itself was reduced from a three-bay garage to two bays. One window was removed from the garage, and a single exterior, exterior door was added. As per the Planning Board request when we met last, the, the proposed paver walkway along Prospect Street was changed to a narrower stepping stone walk with a much larger planted garden area to be placed in front of the building along Prospect Street. And of course, the site plan was changed to reflect the changes to the garage in addition to reducing it to a two-bay garage. We also slid it over two feet to the left, actually farther from the, from the neighboring lot line. And what that did is allowed better parking for spaces P and 3, P3 and P4, which I will show you at the, on the next slides. So here is our original elevations of the garage. As you can see, it had three doors and then three windows in the rear. Next slide, please. And now we have reduced that to two bays. There are only two windows in the back, but we did add an additional exterior door on the right elevation. Presumably, this garage is going to be split in the middle, and that way, there's a garage door and an entrance door to each of the two bays. And then with respect to the site plan, this is the site plan we, we showed at the July 7 meeting with the three-car garage. And if you look along Prospect Street, okay, this is the revision. You can see that it now reflects the smaller two-car garage, which has been slid over to our right in looking at the plan, which allows for two spots to the left of the garage. And then if you look at the Prospect Street, that, that, yeah, that area, that planter has been increased in size, as the board had asked. And if you can see, there's just a small stone walkway, very narrow walkway that will lead from that parking spot over to the front bricked entrance walkway. So we did respect the board's request in that regard. I did go through at the last meeting the minor site plan review criteria and proposed to the board how we met those. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them, but I don't want to take up the board's time in reiterating information I had presented before. So we can move on to the next slide. That is the... There we go. So in conclusion, members of the board, the proposed improvements, the addition of the garage and the previous driveways and the landscape enhancements will certainly improve the aesthetics and the sustainability of this multifamily home. Doing so, we do not believe this project will be detrimental in any way to the neighborhood. The addition of the garage are in keeping with the agricultural style of the existing structure and the neighborhood in general. It certainly will not adversely impact traffic, parking, or pedestrian safety as we are improving off-street parking and, and also pedestrian walkways in and about the property. There is no change of use proposed, and the minor increase in the building size will not cause a dramatic or unreasonable strain on any of the existing public services servicing the property. There should actually be no increase in the services. The improvements will not create any adverse air quality, noise, glare, or odors. The proposed improvements are being done in conformity with all of your zoning requirements and APCO building and health codes, and so will not be adverse, will not adversely impact the environment, open space, public health, or safety. Overall, the proposed environments, while not causing adverse impacts to the neighborhood, will, in our opinion, be beneficial to the neighborhood. It's going to increase the property value and, and make this a more aesthetically pleasing and, and functional property. So we are happy to answer any further questions the board has. As I said, our, our development team is here, so we should be able to address any questions you have. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Did anyone else on your team want to speak before we commence with our comments and questions?
No, Madam Chair, I think we're just available if you do have comments and questions.
Okay, I'll open it to Planning Board members. Who would like to speak?
Sorry, Chair Sontag, did you want to open up for a public comment, just to see if there's any?
That's right. I'm so sorry. Thank you for reminding me. At least I'm consistent. I always forget. We will take public comments. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand electronically. Give us your name and your address, and try to limit your comments to two minutes. Who would like to speak? And Director Port will let you in.
Thank you, Chair Sontag. It does not look like we have any takers. Thank you.
Close public comment section and go back to the board. And I reiterate my, re, re, say again my question. Would anyone like to ask a question or make a comment to the development team?
I, I have a small question. I haven't understood the reason for the small walkway across the front of the property. It doesn't seem to gain you anything from the sidewalk. It's just a curiosity.
Hey, Rick, it's Blake Wilcox. No, it's a good point. I, when I put this in there initially, it really was to the people that would be parking on the side if they wanted to have access to go through. Basically, not having to walk on the sidewalk, if they wanted to just kind of walk from the driveway across that piece of grass over to the brick walkway and up into that doorway. Again, it was more just kind of connecting the driveway to that brick walkway by, by a path. Again, it was more just a, a vision that I had for that space. So there's really no, you know, sort of big vision here. It, it was really just sort of a, it, it felt better than walking out on the sidewalk, along the sidewalk, and then onto the, the brick walkway, especially if they're bringing in groceries or something. It's a little shorter distance.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I'm curious to know why the ZBA and you agreed to limit the garage to only two bays.
So Bonnie, I'll take this one again. It's, it's Blake Wilcox. I think that one of the, one of the, some of the feedback from one of the members was that it felt a little bit too big. And I, I had been very open that I had teetered on, you know, is three or two sort of the right, you know, the right field case? And one of the board members had said, you know, geez, it, it would feel better as a two versus a three. And I, again, I was 49% 51% sort of teetering on three and two anyways. So it was something that I said, hey, I'm, I'm kind of with you on this one. So we, we agreed to reduce it from three to two.
Thank you. And I noted from our previous conversation that we did have another condition we were talking about, and I don't know, well, yes, it would be separate as another condition, to require as-built plan for review before issuance of the occupancy permit. And I believe that might have been Rick who recommended that. I'm not sure to speak to why that would be important to include as a, a special condition. Am I correct, Rick, that you had requested that?
I remember the discussion, and I remember Andy talking about how that was a standard, standard process anyway. I don't remember the particulars of it. I think there was something, there was a reference that would be, oh, I know what it was. It was, it was demonstrating the amount of open space, I think, in the back or something like that. There was a question about the open space calculation. And so I think it was, we were just going to confirm that they met that requirement, that they met the open space square footage as part of that as-built.
So, yeah, so Rick, it's Blake again. Sorry. Yes, no, and we would do that anyways as part of the special permit to do an as-built, to basically show that we didn't just hot-top the entire site. Because look, we all, and some of these projects is all of a sudden you show up and they black-top the entire site. That's why they, the town now requires the as-built and basically have it certified that we've, that we've adhered to stipulations as part of the special permit and as part of this, this process.
Okay, so just confirming, there's only the one special permit, special condition, which is the sidewalk and street trees specification?
Yes, this was to, I believe in the condition was to replace, and I could go back and look at it, but one or two of the trees along Prospect.
The specifications, exactly. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure we, we have that incorporated into the final decision. They have, I was going to look now at the, the findings. And rather than go through all of them, I just wanted to see if anybody, if anything pops out to anybody that you want to highlight. I have one question on the land use planning finding. This building will continue to add to the mix of uses within the city. In, in what way is that true, Mr. Wilcox?
Well, Madam Chair, if I could answer that.
Yes.
I, I believe it's the fact that we will, we will be maintaining a multi-unit building, multi-family building, which provides another option to, as you know, single-family or duplex structure, so.
I know that, and it has been that way. We have no control over whether it's rental, homeownership, or condo. Do you, can you tell us what it will be, just for our edification?
Yes, Madam Chair, it will be condominium ownership.
Yeah. That kind of mix is not terribly helpful to the city, but I just put it on the record that we're losing rental properties here. It's not our, none of our business, what the owners decide to do, but it's unfortunate. And for the development and performance standards, I'll throw it back to the board members if any of them stand out to you that you'd like to have commented on. Please do so at this point. I think they've all been covered in general in the summary by the applicant.
Bonnie, there are a couple of places where the findings refer to requests by the applicant. And I'm just wondering whether... And I'm just wondering whether that's really appropriate. So, you know, under, under site plan criteria, traffic, parking, public access says the applicant has asked for a waiver from the requirement to submit a traffic report. And under site plan and architectural design says the applicant has asked for a waiver from the requirement. Um, I think if we haven't already, I think we've already granted those waivers.
Yes, sir.
So I almost think that those sentences should be deleted because they're, it's past. You know, we've, we've already gone past that. And, and again, to your point earlier about the adding to the mix of uses, I almost think that can be deleted too. I think that the, the sentence stands by the, under land use planning stands by itself. It says the project is compatible with land use goals for the city and involves the preservation and renovation of housing in this small city. So I'm, I'm just concerned that adding those extra sentences doesn't add anything to our decision.
Okay.
This is Andy. I would concur and just recommend that, uh, as, uh, member Tanta, uh, Tanger had just said, take out that, uh, from all the, uh, bullets and leave the waivers as granted earlier in the decision.
Okay. Yeah, there seems to be a combination in the staff report of notes to us and the actual findings, and that should be cleaner in the future. So it's good to get started looking at it that way. Um, and, um, it'll help me when I read the final document before I sign it. So thank you for catching that. Anything under the, similarly, under the development and performance standards that needs to be edited out?
I, I, I referred to that under the site plan and architectural design.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Yeah, I was wondering where that was. Yeah, that's the one I was looking for. Thank you. Right. Okay, rest of those, um, stand on their own as findings. Any further discussion? Anything else, uh, the applicant's team would like to add?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm going to call for a motion. Before I do though, I have to check with one of our members to see if she's eligible to vote. Anne, did you listen to the recording of this meeting? Because you were not present at the first hearing on this. And I need to hear you, you muted.
I'm sorry. No, I did not.
Okay, so you're not eligible as, um, and Bob is not, but that gives us five votes, which is what we need for a minor site plan. So we should be good to go. I don't hear anybody making any noises otherwise. Let's find out with the, I need a motion. Yes, I need a motion as, um, written here. Um, who would please make that motion and read it?
I will make the motion, Bonnie. Um, I make the motion to approve the minor site plan review application for eighty-six, eighty-eight Prospect Street in accordance with the draft findings and draft special condition provided by the Office of Planning and Development. I guess I would add with the changes to the, um, findings that we discussed.
To findings and performance standards?
Yes.
And may I have a second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay, and let me just take roll call for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Abstain.
Bob?
Abstain?
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So it is approved. You are good to go.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time. We greatly appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you, and, um, we appreciate your time as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. This is Blake. Thank you, everyone, for, for the time tonight.
Good. Okay, request for the ex- an extension of, uh, the thirty-six Colby Farm Lane. Um, this is another one of those, this is the Blue Wave Solar Project requesting a one-year extension of the site plan approval decision. Um, pretty straightforward, but I do believe we have a representative, if you'd like to speak. You're welcome to.
Aside Josh from Blue Wave?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, Chairman. Uh, this is Josh Larcia from Blue Wave Solar. Um, I reached out to, to Andy a few, or several weeks back, um, just in anticipation of the, uh, as written expiration of the site plan approval. Um, and speaking with Andy, you know, of course, um, due to the state of emergency and tolling, um, wasn't identified as a hard issue, but did just want to go ahead and formally submit the request for the extension and, uh, just briefly checking with the board. Um, you know, I've been interfacing with a few members, uh, from the city, including Andy on a number of items for the project, but, um, just for the board's, uh, edification to let you know that, uh, you know, continuing to work on the project, obviously there has been, um, some delays just due, you know, due to various factors, um, over the last, uh, year or a half. Uh, but we are, you know, continuing to work on the project, uh, currently, uh, working to, uh, firm down, uh, a contract with it, with an EPC contractor and, um, uh, again, just trying to close out all, all open ends of the city. So, uh, looking forward to getting the project built. Um, but just wanted to kind of, at Andy's recommendation, uh, go ahead and just formally request the extension on the written decision.
So am I correct in assuming that you haven't even broken ground yet if you're still talking to contractors?
Correct. So, yeah, we ha- we haven't, we have not yet submitted for a building permit. Um, the hope would be to do that, uh, in the coming months. Um, this project, uh, would, would be, uh, part of a portfolio of projects. We'd be looking to kind of release construction on all simultaneously, but, um, but yeah, so have you, I've not yet applied for a building permit, but, um, are in the process of, of, uh, pulling together fully, uh, full engineered, uh, construction level drawings.
Okay, any other questions from board members?
Um, it's me, Bonnie, Don. I, I agree wholeheartedly to provide the, uh, schedule relief, but, but I do have a, a question. I'm a bit confused, not, not a bit confused. I'd just like clarification and this may be just, you know, be sure everything's in writing. Um, in the, in the, uh, planning board report, and I appreciate the, the one typo with respect to the date. But the tolling, which is from March to June, what's it, fourteen, twelve months, whatever. So I guess my question is, if there was no action taken on this, that, doesn't this permit expire fourteen months after the original expiration, expiration date, Andy or Bonnie?
No, it's two, isn't it two years, Andy?
Correct, yeah, it's, we still have a valid permit.
What it says here though, it says on eight, seven, nineteen, the planning board voted to approve the application for the major site plan review. Whereas the, whereas the approval itself was granted on ten sixteen twenty-one. That, that was supposed to be ten sixteen nineteen, I understand that. The one-year extension will be ten, from ten sixteen twenty-one to ten sixteen twenty-two. I understand that. I guess my only question is, how does the tolling, uh, provision impact this?
So, uh, actually, I'm, I guess I'm glad you asked that question. So that the tolling is a bit of a, uh, a bit of a complication for every time these come up because you have to look at the, uh, as is put in the staff report, the tolling period. What we thought, we talked about this internally, Caitlin and I discussed with Jennifer Blancher, and we, we discussed, um, we think it's, there's benefit here to being very specific about the date of the extension, uh, in the vote, uh, for the extension rather than relying solely upon the, um, the tolling, um, itself. So, um, what is being suggested here is, as, as you pointed out, Don, that there's a typo in the staff report that the original, uh, decision, I guess, was signed on ten sixteen nineteen, not twenty-one. Um, and as Bonnie pointed out, you know, they have a two-year term. So we're really talking about, um, the extension from ten sixteen twenty-one to ten sixteen, uh, twenty-two as a one-year extension to the permit that they currently have.
Understand, again, I, I, if I was Josh in Blue Wave, I would be requesting the same thing in front of the planning board. I just wanted to understand from a point of, of just facts. Um, that, that this really is extended for up, up until twenty-two. But again, uh, I, I'm happy to make the motion to, to, to extend it, uh, ten sixteen twenty-two.
I'll take that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Rick.
Okay. And I'll take roll for approval. Um, this is stands on its own. Everybody who's here is eligible to vote as far as I understand. Is that correct, Andy?
That's correct.
Okay. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
I think I'll abstain. I did not vote for this project initially.
Bob?
Yes.
Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So you have your extension.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. Um, and again, just, uh, look forward to continuing to work in with the city and, uh, moving the project right along. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. And request for lot, for lot release at Port Village Lot Twenty-two, which is at the address eight Dorothy Lucy Drive. I understand, um, there, we're not expecting anyone to come on behalf of the applicant. So, Andy, you want to walk us through this?
Sure, um, that's, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I'm actually just going to show, uh, two things real quick just to make it simple for everyone. Um, looking at the city's GIS, just so you can orient yourselves, uh, the subject lot that's in question to be released is, uh, shown here. I've highlighted it in our GIS. Um, this is actually a, an old subdivision. Um, the remaining, the other lots in the subdivision have been released, but, uh, this particular one hadn't. This comes up quite frequently, I think, as some of you already know from experience, either, uh, on your own or as a board member. Um, sometimes closings are happening and, um, a title examiner realizes that something, uh, still loose in there and needs to be resolved. Um, so in this instance, it's, uh, all the other lots in the subdivision have been, um, have been reviewed, uh, and released. Uh, the plan of reference is here. And again, you can see that same lot. I just highlighted that for you, but, um, you can see that same lot. Uh, there is an easement that was required and that is on record, um, that provides access, uh, a, uh, pedestrian access or public access on the, the property. Uh, that's been recorded and kind of make it out there, that photo. Um, at any rate, um, the office recommends, uh, or has no objection to the release of the lot, uh, based on the completion of the project, um, and there being no outstanding issues that we're aware of.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to, uh, approve the request, request for a release of the covenant for this property.
So moved, Anne.
Thank you, Anne. And a second?
A second, Alden.
Okay, roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. That is approved. Okay, moving right along, approval of the minutes from eight, our last meeting, eight four twenty-one. I'll take a motion and then we'll see if there are any comments. Motion to approve? Anybody out there?
I'll move to approve them, Bonnie.
Thank you, Beth.
Yep.
Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Any comments?
I've sent some in already, so I'm all set.
Okay.
Bonnie, um, I am confused. Because what I sent yesterday, commented on yesterday was the July twenty-first minutes.
Right, we didn't meet on the fourth.
Oh, I'm just going by the agenda.
That's the confusion, okay.
That's where it's wrong. So the agenda is wrong. And it should be, yeah, I know, it's seven twenty-one twenty-one. I, I just remembered.
Yeah. Apologies, when the, when the office prepares these draft agendas, it might have just been left there, assuming that the, uh, fourth would have been the meeting. So apologies on behalf of the office.
So the motion should be different then.
Well, let's scrap the whole motion, start all over again. Beth, could you make the motion again, please?
Yes, I moved to approve the minutes of seven twenty-one twenty-one.
Thank you. Alden?
Second.
Okay. A further discussion, Alden, you've already said you set your notes in.
Yes.
And I had some minor edits. Um, nothing substantial that I could see. Anyone else have anything that you'd like to bring up on those minutes? If not, I'll call the roll. I'm getting tired of going in this order. I'm going to go in reverse order. Uh, see if I can, well, I get to go first, yes. Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
That was confusing. Actually, I had to really read them. Okay, um, that's everything on the agenda, um, that's itemized. Um, Andy has already alluded to our meetings. Going forward will be a mix of face-to-face and hybrid. Um, Andy, would you like to clarify a little bit about the choice of the senior center and how we're going to manage this whole thing?
Sure, thank you. Um, so, uh, we've been working the office, uh, working with, uh, in relay with Rick and Bonnie about, um, how we can transition back to in-person meetings. Uh, I do know that there may be some discussion in the coming days about, uh, the Delta Barrett and so forth, but, uh, we're still on track to, um, make the hybrid meetings, uh, you know, going forward. So, uh, to make a long story short, uh, we ran into some issues in the council chambers trying to maintain the, um, the bookings for those on a go-forward basis, um, although we had previously met there, um, you know, generally on a regular basis before the pandemic. Um, in response to that, we looked at the senior center. That was the next, uh, most viable and appropriate space. It's also, um, very appropriate, you know, it's, it's a good functional space. Um, I would actually say a little bit better than the, the council chambers in some ways, uh, in terms of layout. Um, but at any rate, uh, we were working to book those spaces. Some bookings, uh, had already been done, some larger events. Um, and there were some folks that were concerned about having to relocate or, uh, or shift those folks. Um, so what we've talked about, uh, was, uh, moving to the hybrid meetings. And the first meeting that we plan to do that at is at our very next meeting on nine, one, uh, September first, um, at the senior center, um, but with the hybrid aspect. So we're basically, you would be able to connect via Zoom or the applicants would be able to connect via Zoom and so forth. Uh, we are going to be testing that, uh, next week, the equipment setup, just to make sure it's all working smoothly. Uh, but we are trying to do the same setup that the council and the school committee have been trying, which is the owl camera. Um, that is intended essentially to, uh, rather than, uh, you, each of you being captured by your own cameras if you're using them, um, having a, a device in the room that's basically trying to capture everybody, uh, and display on the, the screen what, what's being shown. So, um, I have to still experiment with that, uh, piece of equipment, uh, just make sure we understand how smoothly that can integrate. But, uh, basically it would still function largely as a Zoom meeting. We would have a screen in the room where you'll see the materials being displayed. Um, if you bring your own device, of course, you can use that with the, the Wi-Fi, um, to look at anything yourselves. Um, but, um, you may not, uh, i- unless you're bringing your own, uh, laptop or device, you may be picked up by the owl camera as opposed to obviously your own. Um, uh, other than that, uh, we'll have, just anticipate there may be public comment that we see on Zoom or those that are remote, as well as those that are physically in the room if they are attending in person. Um, and, uh, as, as Bonnie alluded to, we had, because we ran into some issues with those, uh, bookings that could not be shifted, um, uh, what we are doing now is, um, I, I will actually be sending out to the board a list of dates, um, just so you can, you can think about them on your calendar and, and mark them off, but they will be ones where we are solely remote. And that is because, uh, we ran into the double bookings essentially that would have been in that room. Um, and there was a desire to, to, uh, maintain the commitments that have been made to some other folks who have booked. Um, uh, some of these going back to when the pandemic, you know, uh, months ago when the pandemic was happening and there was assumption that boards were meeting. So, at any rate, um, we'll be, all of a sudden I'll list out to you the ones we're meeting remotely only, um, but otherwise our plan is to start meeting in hybrid where you can meet physically, uh, but there's still the, uh, remote access for anybody who, who needs or wants that.
Andy, does that mean that when we meet in person, we must be masked?
Uh, actually, as of right now, I'm not aware of a requirement of that. I do think at the senior center, uh, there is a requirement for the staff there, but I believe in the coming days we are going to have that mask mandate, um, uh, officially. And so I would int- to your question, thank you for asking, I would anticipate folks being asked to bring or wear a mask. Um, you know, I, I don't know how, uh, that may affect the audio and so forth, the owl camera, uh, and things like that. But, um, you know, in some ways the Zoom, uh, can work a little better, but I would anticipate by that point there being a mask mandate for, uh, folks and ourselves meeting in that space.
And that space will be open to the public as well, correct?
Correct, this, right. And if, you know, of course, we'll be, we'll advise you if there's anything that changes and, you know, uh, Board of Health, you know, uh, order or anything like that that might affect us. But otherwise, I would anticipate meeting there physically, the hybrid access and, and as, uh, Bonnie had mentioned, probably, uh, with the requirement that we were masked.
And also I want to make it really clear that any board member who wants to can still remain remote. Or if it's more convenient, um, for one meeting and not another, you know, you'll always have the option to, uh, zoom in. Just make sure you're there on time because otherwise we won't know if you're coming or not. And the last thing I was going to say is And the last thing I was gonna say is, well, whatever it was. Hmm.
Bonnie, I have something, if perhaps you need another minute to remember, and it will jog your memory if that works for you.
Okay, thanks, I, I knew I could defend you.
I'll buy, I'll buy you some time. I'll, of course, I'll defer to, to you, Bonnie, but and, and don't intend to say anything, but with respect to perhaps any discussions that may have occurred since our last executive session, I would just ask that, you know, again, your, your, your decision, whether you want to schedule an executive session to discuss if anything in fact has been transpired. Thank you.
Good point. When it does, I will. I have nothing, you know, there's nothing more. It's in progress.
Thanks.
Well, whatever it was, if, if it comes back again, I'll send you a note, but I don't think it was that terribly important, but it was about meeting. Oh, I know what it was. We're going to be streamed live on cable, right, Andy?
My understanding is that they take the feed from Zoom and are able to publish that on cable. It's the same thing as folks, you know, watching on the internet at home, of course. But I believe that they have that ability now. It's something that they've recently tried to integrate.
Right, so that's consistent with what started, what, two years ago, which only lasted for a year. When we were meeting in city council chambers, that people could, you know, kick back, watch us on TV and eat popcorn or throw it at us or whatever. So that's different from people having to log in with Zoom. So we may have a broader audience. But that's just to let you know that we can be seen by, by different people on different devices from different sources. Okay, that's all I've got. Oh, well, there is, is there anything else from you, Andy?
Not from me, no. I, as we already mentioned earlier this evening, there's another zoning hearing, but we've aligned it with one where we've continued, so you already know about that.
Right. Okay, well, I turn it over to Anne.
Yes, I have decided to resign from the planning board. I have some short-term orthopedic issues to address this fall, and my resignation will be effective October one as I have a surgery scheduled on the fourth. So it's been a pleasure to work with all of you, and I wish you the best in your future deliberations.
Oh, Anne, we have to say goodbye a second time, some of us. Me, anyway.
Perhaps the third time will be a charm.
Yeah. Hey, Don, were you here when she did this little routine on us the first time?
Unequivocally, yes, yes.
It's two of us that are just.
Well, my term had ended that time.
No excuses, Anne, none whatsoever. The good news was she came back. I'm not gonna say another word. We are so glad to have you. We're gonna miss you. What can I say?
Thank you.
Okay, we need another candidate. We're working on one right now. I don't want to say anything until the mayor gives her okay. Hopefully, she will. That would be MJ's replacement, who said she would stay on as long as we needed her. Anne does not have that flexibility. So I don't know if I could talk MJ into staying later than October first to cover for Anne. We'll see. But that does not take the burden off anybody's shoulders to get out there and find us candidates, because we do a very good job of finding the right kind of people. The mayor said today to me that she is finding it a struggle to keep boards and commissions with volunteers, and she's considering another public media request. You know, that's not my favorite way to go, because you don't know what you're gonna get. So we have a lot more control if we even through friends of friends of friends find people. So I will make that request one more time to dig around, keep your eyes open when you're out and about, looking through your contacts, whatever. Someone who would fit on the board. You've all been on the board, or some of you have been a little more recent than others, but kind of know what we have to offer and where we have gaps in knowledge and experience, so I'll leave that to you. And I trust we will find yet another candidate. We always have, and we will just do it. So thanks for keeping an eye out. That's all I have for tonight. Anybody else have anything else? Rick, that looks really good. Did she just bake something and leave it for you?
She was out at a potluck and brought stuff back.
All right, I'm gonna go.
Let me just say one thing. I am, as part of Storm Surge, I'm doing a presentation on the thirty-first at the senior center on zoning and resilience. And I hadn't thought an awful lot about the topic before I agreed to do it, so I've been doing a lot of research. And hopefully, by the time the thirty-first comes around, I'll have a lot of good things to say. Also, there's gonna be a panel after my presentation. Andy is gonna be on the panel to kind of give the local zoning perspective and the, and the local resiliency committee perspective. And Jen Hughes from Narama County Planning Commission is gonna talk about it from a regional point of view. She's on the Conservation Commission in Ipswich, and is also the chair of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Committees. And our friend Nick Cracknell will talk about it. We'll talk about his experience with the study with looking at resilience in historic districts. And I suspect he may also provide some of his private perspective as well. So if you're interested in another night out, Tuesday, October thirty-first.
And that'll still be on Zoom as well?
It will be. I'm trying to think how, how they're doing it. I'm not sure it's on Zoom, but it's gonna be filmed. It'll be on YouTube afterwards.
So if you want real time, if we want real-time exposure, we better get ourselves over to the.
Yes, I think so, yes. I'm not really sure, but I think that, I think that the Newbury and Salisbury cable stations are broadcasting it live, but Newbury Port is only doing it and taping it and showing it later, for some reason.
Rick, I'm sorry, did you say August thirty-first or?
August thirty-first, two weeks from yesterday.
Yep, and what time?
Seven o'clock at the senior center.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Rick.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second, Alden.
Okay. Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you.